There you go. So the main presentation part of the program is going to be recorded. We will not be recording when we go into breakout room. So for you to know that you are being at this time. So, welcome. We are very, very excited to be hosting our first Georgetown Village Town Hall today. Of course, we would have loved to have been able to host you in person, serve refreshment, visit, do our usual Georgetown Village warm and welcoming types of presentations. Unfortunately, this was not possible today. So we are doing the best we can and we appreciate your joining us online, particularly with the continuing pandemic and May of ours as continued state of emergency. This is a very exciting year for Georgetown Village. We have now been open 10 years and we have some exciting new changes and innovations to share with you today. Although this is our 10th year, this is the 20th year of the Village Movement. As you know, Beacon Hill, Boston is the first village and they're celebrating 20 years in February, February 15. They have invited all the villages to celebrate and we're going to be sharing information about their celebration in our email blast and I encourage you to attend. They'll also be recording it, so we'll be sharing the link for those of you who don't make it the day of the celebration. The goal of today's Town Hall meeting is to have the opportunity to review some of our accomplishments, share some of our goals and tell you about some of our new initiatives that we're starting at this time. We also want to hear from you. We are going to give you the opportunity to share thoughts with the general group and then our breakout sessions are being hosted by board members. We look forward to hearing your opinions and having you share your thoughts as to what we could be doing better and what you like. If you have not pre-chosen a breakout room, you will have the opportunity to join one. We will ask you after we've divided everybody into the breakout sessions, which group you would like to join. If you know now which group you want to join and you haven't pre-chosen, please put something in the chat and Adriana and Varnita will copy it down and let me know. As you know, in the past few years, we've received some grant funding from the DC Department of Aging and Community. But this past year, they really showed us that they appreciated our worth and the fact that we didn't close our doors. They were extremely generous and their funding allowed us to create a new website, which I'm going to share the homepage of Hire Adriana and update our back office software by moving to a new platform for our members and volunteers to use. We are really very grateful for this gift and we certainly appreciate their trust and their confidence in the Village Movement and in our villages. I was honored to have been chosen to launch Georgetown Village 10 years ago and I'm thrilled to still be with you all today. Our goal has always been to continue to grow and improve. And one thing that hasn't changed in the past 10 years is that every board I have worked with shares that goal. We've always constantly had very hardworking boards and our desire and really goal to provide our members and volunteers with the best services and the best professionalism and the ability to fill assignments that are interesting and challenging for our volunteers that continue. In addition to our board, I'm very grateful to have found excellent, hardworking colleagues to join me for the benefit of our members and volunteers. Many of you know Varnita, but I'm going to ask her to kind of wave and say hi. Varnita, you'll need to unmute yourself so people can see you and hear you.
Hello.
Thank you. And I'm not so sure that many of you would have the opportunity to meet Adriana. So again, I'm going to ask her to unmute and say a quick hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here.
Both Adriana and Varnita are working part-time to help me provide you with all the efficient, friendly and professional assistance that you expect from Georgetown Village. Adriana will be offering more programming opportunities for our volunteers and members and will also be assisting with filling service requests and working with our volunteers. Varnita is going to continue to work in the office and most recently has spent a huge amount of time and effort transitioning our software as well as working with the development team to get our new website up and running. I invite all of you to visit our new website and see the results of the many, many, many weeks of training, of work that Varnita has put into it. I'm going to briefly share my screen. I'm going to try to briefly share my screen and show you the new website. Here you go. Okay. Bear with me one second. As you can see, it's attractive. It's shock looking. It's not as cluttered as our past pages. And if you want to visit this page, and I do hope you will, the website address remains the same. This is www georgetown-village.org. It's up. It's running. We're going to be updating it as we go. Our goal is to keep it up to date so that you always have the most current information at your fingertips at any time of the day or night. In addition to that, I mentioned our back office software. So this means that our members and volunteers will be able to go online, will be able to access our membership directory if they're signed in. This is not open to the public. They'll also be able to immediately add programs electronically to our, to your electronic calendars, for those of you who use a Google Calendar or some other electronic calendar. And you'll also be able to see which of your members would near you, which of our friends you would know. And the way you're going to be able to do that is when you're signed in. Now, I know some of you are saying, well, I don't know how to sign in. We're going to be able to sign you in and have you sign in on your own. So I have scheduled three training sessions to take place in February. Watch your email blast for the dates of these sessions. They're all at different times of the day. I'm trying to, for three different sessions or at different times in an effort that all of you will be able to at some point zoom in. If none of these days or times work for you, as always, we're here to help. So please contact the office. We will make sure that you learn how you too can access our new back office software. As you know, Georgetown Village has provided many services throughout this pandemic and throughout our 10 years of existence. We never closed our doors. Our impact was significant and we were extremely happy to read that you recognized it. So many of you participated in the DC Village survey over the summer and we read anonymously, of course, your comments and clearly there was a lot of appreciation and recognition of the work that we put in. Our 2021 annual report clearly states the impact that Georgetown Village has had this past year. You will be receiving a copy in the mail with your February newsletter. I should warn you that although the February newsletter is written, it'll be in your mailboxes a little bit later because we're in the process of printing our annual report. So you won't get to see it right away, but you will get to see it shortly and we look forward to sharing it with you. To briefly share some of the statistics that we are reporting in our report, this year we filled 593 service requests. This means that our volunteers provided 850 hours of volunteer service. And by the way, those are the ones we know of. I know that many of you, I help, many of our volunteers are helping members kind of behind the scenes and we really appreciate that. However, it doesn't help for our statistics. So I'm going to ask those volunteers who are on today and many of you are joining us as well as the members here, that if a volunteer helps you outside of going through the office, please let us know because we want to be able to track that. We want to be able to show how hard our volunteers are working and we want to be able to thank the volunteers. We do thank our volunteers and we thank our members because we appreciate your time and support. It is now my pleasure to introduce our board president Carol Kelly, whose fresh ideas and perspectives are bringing many of our great new initiatives to you. Carol, I asked you to join us, unmute, and there you go. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Lynn. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be the president of Georgetown Village in this year, which is our 10th anniversary and the 20th anniversary of the Village Movement. Some of you have heard me say that I moved from a career in which I spent a lot of time working on national policies and I did do that, but I rarely saw the people who were impacted by the policies that I was working on in the healthcare field. And now as president of Georgetown Village, I actually get to see what we do and the people that we help and impact. So it's really gratifying for me to be able to be your president and see that. And I've been on the board for three and a half years now, just so you know. Thanks again to the founding members of the board and the founding members of the organization without whom we would not be here. Also, my fellow board members, Lynn mentioned board members' work. It's not only a labor of love for Georgetown Village board members. It remains labor on behalf of Georgetown Village. So in just a few moments, I think Lynn's going to have us do more Zoom introductions to one another and have the board members wave to you so you can see all of us. And we have a very good cadre of them online here today. I also want to thank the staff, Lynn, Varnita and Adriana. We know we couldn't do it without you, your core to our efforts. Let me especially salute Adriana for recently joining us, Varnita for her long years of service to us and your dedication, and our founding executive director. We're so grateful that you're still with us and still leading the charge for us. So thank you very much, Lynn. I also wanted to highlight one new initiative and Lynn talked about the new website and back office functions. And you'll see us do more building on the platform that we already have as an organization as we move through our 10th year and beyond. And one of our key initiatives, we're calling the Technology Hub, Tech Hub. Now, it's clear in, at least to me, and I think to most people in the present environment in which we find ourselves, being online is barely discretionary. There's so much that happens online now and especially during the pandemic, as Lynn noted. The existence of Zoom, the willingness of our members to participate in this way meant that we had the opportunity to continue our operations. In a way, it would have been very difficult to do without that. So what are we going to do with this tech hub? Well, there are three parts to our efforts. First, for those of us who already exist online but could certainly improve our skill set, we're going to have offerings for you. I count myself as living in a Zoom world. I teach at GW and I have had to learn how to teach on Zoom, so it's kept me more current. But I still am having problems with my iPad the last two days. So you know, even those of us who do some things online run into struggles from time to time. So we're going to improve all of our service abilities if you're willing to do it. We'll be there for you. The second is for those who are hesitant to be online, I totally understand. But we're going to try to break down some of those barriers and to get more and more members who are hesitant to be online to do so because you're really missing an important part of life in the world anymore with my Virginia Hospital Center website connection. I don't even have to speak to a person to get an appointment, to do all my paperwork, and I can get a telehealth visit scheduled without ever talking to anybody. Now, maybe you think it's a better idea to be able to talk to someone. It's certainly an option, but I also availed myself of those options. So it's not only in your day-to-day living, it's a lot of functionality that you wouldn't otherwise have. And then thirdly, and Lynn touched on this, we are going to enhance our ability to communicate online with you. Again, we'll be answering the phone. We'll be taking mail. We'll do all the functions that we've normally done for our members. But if you're interested in that online relationship and efficiency and you know, signing up for things at 2:00 in the morning if you happen to be up, we'll be there for you on the website. So there'll be three features to this. First, we'll start with a survey to see where our members are in their technology use and needs. And then we'll roll out a number of activities and services, again, supported by the DACO grant. So we appreciate that. So in these changing times, I think the village has stepped up for all of us and certainly we've stepped up for the village as well. Let's keep that positive energy going as we move into the year ahead and beyond. I know it's been a challenge, but I see better times ahead. So thank you for allowing me to be your president and for joining us here today so we can clearly hear what you think we do well and what else you would like us to do, which is within our charter and mission. Thank you very much and Lynn, I would pass it back to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Carol. It's now my pleasure to introduce Josh Kunitz, who is our board treasurer. And so let me just find, there he is. Okay, thanks, Josh. So Josh is what I would call one of our unsung heroes. He spends hours every month ensuring often financial stability as an organization. And I'd like you to meet him and Josh, the room is yours.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you. It's good to be here. It is an honor to serve Georgetown Village on the board as well as as a treasurer. And you know, from a financial point of view, the village is in very strong shape. And that's thanks to the generosity of our many donors that come from all walks of life. Board members, members, volunteers, people who seemingly have no affiliation with the village, but we have shown great generosity through the years, building the reserves. As Lynn mentioned, we do participate in numerous grants programs that make a lot of things possible. And always important to remember that the membership fees that we collect from members of the village only make up roughly a third of our operating budget. So those other sources of income to the village are incredibly important. I think Barb will touch on some of that in a little bit here. But the village has been very fortunate through the years to build up some reserves. You know, grants programs are great, but like all things, we know that they could end for various reasons. And it's good to know we have the financial resources to weather that storm, should it come. As Carol mentioned, the village has been growing and in very smart directions. Some of that growth comes at a cost. So our budget for this year is the largest operating budget the village has ever had, but certainly something we can afford, the growth and certainly bringing the village into a new era. So I'm excited to see all of that growth happen. As Carol mentioned, you know, we are a working board. There's a lot of work involved even for what is in the grand scheme of things, a relatively small nonprofit entity. But we do have to close the books each month. We do have to process payroll for our employees. And one of those growth initiatives that I'm really happy about that we were able to do last year was to roll out a retirement plan option for the village's employees with an employer match. And really a great benefit for our employees. Something we probably should have done earlier, but I'm glad we got it done. And you know, something, one of those things we can afford to do to retain the really high-quality employees we have and make sure their futures are bright. So all that said, I have been functioning as the treasurer of the village for, I guess, about a year now. Prior to that, I was the assistant treasurer for Jim Smith, who many of you knew, I'm sure. And we do, the role for the village is so mission critical that we really do need to have some backup talent in this area. And so we are actively looking for someone who would be interested in serving as an assistant treasurer, maybe not in title, but in function and eventually in title if interested. We do have two highly qualified individuals who have expressed an interest and we're going to be discussing it with them. But if you have that background, that finance, accounting background and have the capacity to pitch in when needed, really, really would be good to build in that resiliency. I do work a full-time job in the private sector and you know, there are times, there have been times since when I was the assistant treasurer with Jim, some months where he couldn't do it and I had to step in. And there have been other months where I couldn't do it and Jim had to step in. So we don't have that luxury right now. We'd like to get back to that. So if you have any interest in that, certainly share it with Lynn or other board members and we can talk about it, really something we have to do at some point over the next year. So just wanted to put that out there, but great to be here with all of you today and I look forward to participating in the breakout room later.
Thank you very much, Josh. It is now my pleasure to introduce another one of our very hardworking board members. Barbara Hall has been chairing our development team. And I'm looking to find Barbara. Barbara, would you say hello, unmute and say hello so that I can easily find.
Am I muted, Lynn?
You have unmuted. Thank you so much. And now I continue and all is well. So as I was saying, it's my pleasure to introduce Barbara. She's agreed to share some very personal thoughts with you today. Barbara, thank you for being here and for all you do.
Oh, thank you, Lynn. First, hi, everyone. Thanks so much for being with us today. Carol and Lynn asked if I would say a few words about development and about our new Georgetown Village Legacy Circle, which I'm happy to do. But first, I want to share with you why my husband, Bob, and I are committed to the village. You know, like many of us, two years ago, Bob and I had no, could not even imagine where we would be today. And our lives have changed in so many ways. And during this time, we thought about what was important to us and what was urgent. And for Bob and me, that included Georgetown Village. We were, we have been so impressed by how quickly the village moved to meet the needs of members, delivering masks and more recently rapid tests, getting members vaccinated and providing important guidance. And I want to do a shout out, kudos to our health committee for sharing the latest news and addressing our many questions. And I think just as important, Georgetown Village quickly moved its programming online, thanks to Zoom. And I don't know about you, but, but two years ago, I had never heard of Zoom, much less been on it. And today, I feel like my life is spent there. But thanks to the good work of our programming committee, we're staying informed and engaged. And I think that's been particularly crucial for many of us during a period of isolation. So we know how important Georgetown Village has been to us. And we also know that Georgetown Village operates on a very tight budget. And as Josh noted, donations account for roughly 70% of our revenue. So in addition to our annual gifts, Bob and I wanted to make sure that Georgetown Village would be here for another 10 years. And we decided this past year to make the village a beneficiary, one of the beneficiaries of our IRA. And as a board member, I spoke to the board and I thought, you know, this would be a good time to encourage others to do something similar. And given that it's our 10th anniversary, this seemed the appropriate time to do it. So we launched the Legacy Circle late last year as a way of recognizing supporters who have made a bequest or a planned gift and like us, who want to assure that Georgetown will be around for many years to come. I think some of you have heard me say this before. There are two very simple ways that we can remember Georgetown Village or another not-for-profit with a legacy gift. One is a bequest that can be in our will or in our trust and that can be a specific dollar amount or a percentage of our estate residue after other bequests have been made and estate expenses paid. Or you can do what Bob and I did, designate Georgetown Village as a beneficiary of your IRA. And the important thing there is just make sure that your IRA custodian receives your saved paperwork designating beneficiaries. The good thing about both of these ways of giving, both bequest and giving from our IRAs are revocable. They will not affect cash during our lifetime and they may help lower estate taxes. For example, a testamentary gift from our IRA is not subject to tax, although a comparable gift to our heirs would be taxable to them. So and by the way, I should mention that giving from our IRAs during our lifetime is also easy to do if you're 70 years or older and you don't need all of the income from your IRA. Making a gift directly to a not-for-profit like the village is an efficient way to give because we don't have to pay an income tax on these funds when we withdraw them. So I've been asked, where would my bequest go and why does Georgetown Village need it? And you heard Josh talk about the Georgetown Village Reserve. You know, unless you would designate your gift for something else, your legacy gift would go to the Georgetown Reserve, which in a way, it operates like a quasi-endowment. It would help support special projects like the Tech Hub that you heard us talk about earlier. But I think just as important is it would help Georgetown Village weather economic downturns when annual giving can drop considerably as it did for many not-for-profits back in 2008. And even for those of us who remember back in 1987, I've worked and volunteered for not-for-profits for more than 40 years. And I know how they and the communities they serve can suffer and even good ones can go under. So to conclude, we would love to list you among our legacy supporters. And we would, we are listing our supporters on our website and we're also providing many other benefits, including benefits related to the May 18th anniversary celebration. So if you want to make a legacy gift, and we hope you do, simply send a letter or an email to Georgetown Village, letting us know what you have done or what you plan to do. And if you prefer, we have a statement of intent that we're happy to send to you. And by the way, I do want to mention, you don't have to share with us the anticipated dollar amount of your gift. All of this is confidential, but you do not have to tell us. Just let us know that you've done something. Thank you for listening. Most of all, thank you for supporting Georgetown Village. And be sure to mark your calendar for May 18th.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I'm going to, now, as I mentioned, we have a number of our board members joining us today and we really appreciate their time. And I'd like to introduce the ones that you've not yet met. You will have the opportunity to speak more with them in our breakout session. So joining us today, we have Emily Summers, our board secretary. And if I could ask our board members to kind of wave, that would be nice. Thank you. Matria Hanes-Kelifiora, who is our volunteer chairperson. We also have, joining us today, Diana Dennett, who serves on membership committee. Pam Godwin, who's chair of our healthcare committee. Bill Plant, our communications committee. Misha Kuzrad, who's also on our healthcare committee. Frederick Rickles, also on healthcare. Jessica Zeltato, Michelle Seaver, who's working with our event committee. In addition, we have Liz Bavel, who's working community liaison. Martha Williams, membership, past president. You all know Toni Russen and we're so glad that she's still involved. In addition to that, we have two advisory board members joining us today. I'd like to welcome and thank Gail Nordheimer, past president, and also liaisons to our advisory board, as well as Tom Birch, who's also past board member and currently on our advisory board. So thank you all for being here. I am now going to stop the recording of the session because our, our meeting is, the formal presentation part is now up. And I am going to ask anybody who has anything they would like to share in our general meeting to please unmute yourself and feel free to do that. And then we will go into breakout rooms. Let me give you a little bit of how these breakout rooms are going to work. At least fingers crossed how these breakout rooms are going to work. I have been assigning people to breakout rooms during the other presentations. When I open the room, with any luck, you will all magically go into the rooms you've requested. If you're asked, sometimes when we're attending meetings, a pop-up will appear saying, "Do you wish to join this room?" Please say yes, unless you don't, in which case let me know and I'll reassign you. After that session though, what's going to happen is I'm going to try to set up breakout rooms after the session ends, that you will magically go into for our second session. However, not always does magic work. And so if you wind up in the big room, just give us a few minutes and I will reassign you to the second session of breakout rooms. Breakout rooms are 20 minutes. We are going to have two of them and then you're going to come back to the main room where hopefully we'll have time to socialize, chat with each other, maybe share a drink and enjoy some of our Sunday afternoon together. Um, as I said, we are now going to ask anybody who has any general comments to share. And by the way, this is a good opening for the breakout rooms. Be sure to unmute yourself because we're not going to be able to hear you if you're muted and we'd like to share something. So I am stopping the recording. I am going to ask you to unmute yourself. And remember, we value your opinions, your time and most of all, you're involved in Georgetown Village and the fact that you are here today. So.